It's six o'clock by the clock on the wall. Do we not have a place for Ms. Koch to sit? I'm calling the November 17th meeting of the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Please call the roll.
Debbie Moore.
Here.
Cynthia Meyer.
Here.
Ismail Harris.
Here.
Carrie Kahler. Scott Long.
Here.
Judah Ross.
Here.
Patrice Parsons.
Here.
And Kristi Koch.
Here.
Kristi Koch is, might be a new name to some of you, but when I first came to work at this commission, Kristi was already here. So Kristi, why don't you give us a little bit of your background and what you've been doing until you retired? And let the record show that Ms. Kahler just got here.
Hi, everyone. Well, it's good to be back and thank you. And I'm grateful to our fabulous mayor and council for putting me back on. I have served on the zoning board of adjustment, planning and zoning, and at one point chaired the EDC. Then I took a nice break by training architect and actually have quite a bit of urban design background. So anyway, happy to be here.
And we're happy to have you back. At this time, we will move on to item two, citizen comments. This is where anyone, any citizen can request to speak on any item not on the agenda. Do we have any?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. We will move on to item 3A. Consider action to approve meeting minutes from the September 29, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And we do have a citizen signed up to speak in opposition. So are you Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes.
Would you please come forward and give us your full name and your address, please? You'll have three minutes to tell us why you're opposed to the minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jesse Shoemaker. I'm an attorney at Tuck Law Group, 906 Main Street, Bastrop, Texas. And I'm here on behalf of our clients, Lindy Larson and Sherri Hotkins. I just wanted to address the proposed approval of the minutes from September 29th, specifically item 3E and the improper closed meeting. Under section 551.101 of the Texas Government Code, also known as the Open Meetings Act, this commission is not allowed to conduct a closed meeting unless it first identifies the specific code section that authorizes the closed meeting. As you see on page seven of the minutes, Ms. Moore opened executive session at 6:42 PM. I was here and I do not recall, nor did the minutes reflect that she identified the specific code section that authorized the closed meeting. This is important because according to the Open Meeting Act, certain closed meetings must be recorded. So first, I think it's important and required that the public be informed whether or not this closed meeting on the 29th was recorded. And secondly, whether anyone else besides this commission and the city attorney was included in that meeting. Further, the September 29th agenda states on page one, quote, "As authorized by section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened in a closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item at any time during the meeting." That is not an accurate statement and it should be removed from future agendas or amended to reflect the correct law. I am happy to see that it's not on today's agenda. Under that section of the code, this commission can meet behind closed doors with the city attorney for three reasons and three reasons only. Those are to discuss pending or contemplated litigation, a settlement offer, or on a matter where the city attorney's ethical duty to this commission conflicts with the Open Meetings Act. None of those would have applied to the approval of the Farm Street preliminary plat. The city attorney had no conflicting ethical duty, no settlement offer was on the table, and there was no pending or contemplated litigation. Indeed, even today, there is no pending litigation before this commission. The only possible contemplated litigation at this point would arise if only today, despite these statutory violations, you approved the September 29th meeting as it applied to item 3E. Ultimately, the approval of the Farm Street Village preliminary plat should be overturned and properly addressed according to the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave, you're opposed to the approval of the minutes. Are you saying the minutes do not reflect what happened? Because Farm Street Village is not on this agenda, what you're opposing is the approval of the minutes. Do they not accurately reflect what happened that night?
With regard to item 3E...
The minutes of the meeting are what we are approving, not Farm Street Village. Farm Street Village is not on this agenda tonight. What you have given me is you're opposing approval of the minutes from 9:29 and an improper closed meeting. That's two separate things. We are just now looking at approving the minutes. So if you object to or don't feel that it was accurately portrayed in the minute, that's one thing. But quite frankly, sir, I think you're out of order on this because the minutes reflect what happened that night. Do any commission members have any differing opinions about the minutes?
In regard to that, I believe the minutes should reflect whether or not the meeting was recorded, what specifically code section it was authorized under, and thirdly, whether or not anybody else besides this commission and the city attorney was present in that meeting.
I'm, let me, he's absolutely correct. Basically, that was a illegal executive session. It should not have been held.
This is not what's on the agenda tonight. This is not appropriate for discussion right now.
Yes, it is.
It's on the agenda right now.
And it's...
This statement here regarding closed executive sessions is on every agenda item for the city council. I would ask staff, is this exactly the same verbiage as on the city council with regard to closed executive sessions? Though I'm not here to debate that tonight, what we want to do is get the minutes approved. So do you have any objection to what is, do you saying that the minutes are not accurate?
I would say they are not accurate because they are omitting important facts.
Thank you for your time. Do any commission members have any further discussion? Any comments?
Yes. And I speak from having been on a bunch of boards for a long time, and EDC in particular had a lot of executive sessions. And they're very, very, very specific. And it's a very narrow window when you can use them. Deliberation of real property, contract negotiations, personnel matters, investments.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but once again, I am going to interrupt you because whether it was an illegal or a legal executive session is not what we're discussing.
Well, what he's saying...
We're discussing is approval of the minute.
All the discussion that was held in the back should have been public and it should be made public because it shouldn't have been closed.
That is not what's on the agenda tonight. Thank you for your comment.
Chairman Moore, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Before we take a vote, I want to make sure I know what I'm voting on. I know I'm voting on the minutes that we have from the meeting. I recognize that. When I approve those, because that is what I know, I am approving minutes that are incomplete. Is that correct?
No, ma'am, I do not think they are.
Okay, that's, I'm just asking you that. That's, I want to clarify this before I take a vote.
I do not...
That's your opinion? I mean, I'm not doubting you, Ms. Moore. I'm just, is that your opinion or is that a legal? I don't know where we stand on this.
We're following, we were following the verbiage that is on every council agenda with regard to calling an executive session.
No, and this was a violation of the Open Meetings Act, and that's actually a misdemeanor. So I would urge everyone to hold on approving this because there is a problem. We need to look at it again.
I don't remember, were you at the meeting or watching the meeting?
I was watching it.
Oh, okay.
And I was surprised when you adjourned.
So I have a question. Did we record the executive session?
We did not, no.
That's another, that's, they're supposed to be recorded and held in basically secret or whatever, not released if it's a true open, or if it's a true executive discussion, which this wasn't.
We followed the advice of counsel, legal counsel who was here that night.
And that's one of my questions, just having been on EDC, the staff was very good at directing us and saying, state, you can only talk about these things, and so was legal counsel. And so I'm not sure, and that protects the members, and I'm not sure how that safety net fell through here and if it's happened before.
Are there any further discussion?
I have a question. Would it, would it make sense at this point, since there is some, there's been some concern expressed, to ask the city attorney if the way we handled that meeting was proper?
Well, the city attorney was with us that night.
I know, I know. But I'm saying, should we ask him why he basically didn't advise us otherwise?
Well, there is a differing of, difference of opinion as to whether we were advised properly or not. Whether we were advised properly or not has nothing to do with whether...
What happened?
A minute that we have right now accurately reflect what happened. It's not making a statement as to whether the actions that we took, whether the executive session was properly called or not. That's not what we're talking about. It's whether the minutes accurately reflect what happened. Ms. Kahler?
I read the minutes. I feel like they accurately reflect what happened. I have sat in on numerous meetings that where board members converse with the attorney, both as staff and as a board member. However, since folks seem concerned about it, it seems prudent to postpone the approval of the minutes until the attorney could review the minutes with staff and make sure that it's noted properly.
I'd like to make a motion to defer the approval of the minutes until further looked into.
Motion to defer approval is your second?
Second.
Motion and second. Will you call the roll, please?
Cynthia Meyer.
Yes.
Carrie Kahler?
Yes.
Debbie Moore?
No.
Ismail Harris?
Yes.
Scott Long?
Yes.
Judah Ross?
No.
Patrice Parsons?
I think I'm going to abstain.
Kristi Koch?
Yes.
I'm sorry, she's, she was not a member then? So it's proper for you to abstain.
Abstain, dang.
Thank you.
But if I could vote.
You've made that perfectly clear. We move on to item 3B.
Excuse me, did that, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify, did that pass or what hap, what was the?
Everybody...
It was four to two, with two abstains.
There were two in opposition.
Can't remember Debbie, so you didn't have to. Thank you.
You sound like me.
So that item was postponed.
It's postponed. And in the interim, will you please contact legal?
Well, yes, definitely.
And relay the discussion that we've had and ask for something in writing that we can possibly send out with either the next agenda or ahead of time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item 3B. Consider action to elect Planning and Zoning Commission Chair for FY 2023. It's been my pleasure to serve as your chair, but if you wish to elect someone else as your chair, I certainly understand that this time we'll accept most nominations.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint you as chair. I think you've done a great job.
I second it.
Appreciate your service.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
Just a general comment, we tend to put term limits on our elected people, and I don't think it's good to have people in one position for a long period of time. And I know when the new mayor came on, she made sure to turn over a lot of positions on all these boards, and I think we're getting static again. And I'm concerned that there were this many people on this board that didn't know the Open Meetings Act. And when you rotate through these positions, you have to kind of take responsibility to know that. And I'd actually propose that every couple of years you rotate chairs and not just assume that this is a legacy position.
Well, once again, you are assuming that the executive session was improperly called. We'll find out from council. Ms. Kahler?
As to my motion, I think that we do have a lot of new members on this board, and it behooves us to have somebody with some institutional knowledge to serve as the chair.
And I would also like to state for the record that I think you've done a great job, and I stand by my second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Of course. Item 3C. Consider action to elect Planning and Zoning Commission Vice Chair for FY 2023. Pablo Serna has served honorably and well and advised us quite well as our vice chair. However, after watching the board training and given the fact that he is now concentrating more of his work as an architect in the Bastrop area, he felt it was prudent to step down because we will have, with the construction that's going on, probably more than once, we'll have architects coming before us. And he didn't want there to be any, any impropriety there at all. So on behalf of the commission, I'd like to thank Pablo for his years of service because he's advised as well. So with that, I will open nominations for the election of Vice Chair for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Carrie Kahler.
Second.
Motion and a second to nominate Ms. Kahler. Are there any other nominations? If not, nominations be closed. All in favor of Ms. Kahler? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you and congratulations, I guess.
Thank you. I'm honored, I'm honored to be serving. I appreciate your vote of confidence.
Appreciate, appreciate you serving. Item 3D. Public hearing and consider action to recommend approval to adopt the 2023 Schedule of Uniform Submittal Dates for Site Plans, Place Type Zoning Changes, Plats, Public Building Block B-3 Code, Section 2.3.004, Annual Adoption of Schedule of Uniform Submittal Dates, and the Bastrop Building Block B-3 Technical Manual 1.2.002, Uniform Submittal Dates, as shown in Exhibit A, and forward to the December 13, 2022 City Council Meeting. Woo!
Good evening.
Give us some background as to why.
Yes. So the submittal schedule was something that we put into the code in 2019 in part with the B-3 Code, but mostly because that year the legislature adopted a very strict, what we called the shot clock bill. We also refer to it as House Bill 3167. That bill got codified into Chapter 212 of the Local Government Code. And what that did was put some very strict timelines on review of specifically site plans, some site plans, and then subdivision plats. With that timeline, there has, it's roughly, you have 30 days to either approve or disapprove a review. And then the applicant does have a chance to rectify the errors, and then they have another, we have another 15 days to re-review. So with that, we've built a schedule for all the different application types that the bill applies to. Part of the, you know, the reasoning behind the legislature is that provides a predictable upfront information with a timeline for developers. In order to manage that submittal schedule, we adopted Monday as our submittal date, and we have a different date that different applications are due on each Monday. So one Monday a month, we have site, we take site development plans, and another Monday we'll take the subdivision final plats. And we've set the schedule in that 30-day timeline applies to the time that the city has the plan in our hands. So once we get the review done and we hand it back to them for them to provide their corrections, this clock stops and it starts again when they resubmit. So we have submittal dates and resubmittal dates, and then we've made sure those dates work, that we can get our first review done and out, and then the second review in, and especially if it needs to come to P and Z, to P and Z before that 30-day timeline runs out. So with that, we have, and one of the things that Nicole and I had to painstakingly go over is the holiday schedule. There's a lot of Monday holidays that changes our submittal dates. And then we usually change, like to this month, we moved the P and Z meeting up because next Thursday is Thanksgiving, and we also moved up the December meeting as well. For next year, looking at the calendar, we did not change the November meeting, but we still are moving up the December meeting to the third Thursday of the month because the, I think it's the fifth Thursday of the month for November, so it'll hit after Thanksgiving. So that should get all of our timelines. So in your packet, there's several different schedules. So we have one for plats requiring Planning and Zoning Commission approval, so we make sure we have enough time to review, re-review, and get it to P and Z. I think we get it to P and Z on day 29 of that schedule. One of the things we've done to ensure that we're going to have quorum, because that's a very important thing, we can't miss a meeting if it's on that strict timeline, we, in the code in 2000, very beginning of 2020, we have the zoning board of adjustment members can serve as alternates on P and Z. So if we know that we're not going to have a quorum of P and Z members, we can pull an alternate from the ZBA. So that's also why it's very important to let us know if you are, are and are not going to be attending the meeting, so we know that we need to start calling people. So the one schedule is for plats requiring P and Z approval. We have zoning concept scheme and neighborhood regulating plans. These don't actually fall under the House Bill 3167 timeline, however, they fall under other timelines of the Local Government Code because of notification requirements that we have to meet. So this helps developers set an expectation that if they turn it in on a certain date, when they think they can get to a council meeting to approve that zoning change. So with, with the Local Government Code, we have notifications that have to go out in the newspaper, we have mail notices that have to go out to people within 200 feet. So this timeline takes all of that into account. And then we have plats that are administratively approved. There are some plats under the Local Government Code that staff can approve administratively, so that 30 days is, would be all internal review time. And then the last, we have the site development plans and public improvement plans, which are considered to be a subdivision approval step because it's the infrastructure that goes with the subdivision. So those all fall under this schedule, and these all get administratively approved. So, and then again, yeah, the 30-day timeline for plot approval that comes to P and Z includes the P and Z approval, and that's why it's important that we are able to meet quorum. So any questions on this schedule?
And this is another way to let potential developers know what they need to have in when, and if it has to go back to, how long it will be before it's back to them for consideration.
Yes.
So this is no small task that you undertook to put all these dates together. Thank you. Any commission members have any questions?
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. Looking at this sheet, you've got Planning and Zoning Commission meeting date, Thursday if approved, and then you have another column that says Planning and Zoning Commission meeting date. Can you tell me what the difference is?
So we, so we've gone back and forth on this chart because it always is confusing to everyone. So what it, because before we had it, where was a date, we had approved, approved, approving conditions denied, and then your resubmittal date, and then the council date, or the P and Z date you could get to. So basically, if you turn it in on January 3rd, and we issue your comments on January 12th, and we look at it on January 12th, and you've had a perfect submittal, you're done, you've checked all the boxes, then we'll bring it to P and Z on the 26th, and you're done. But if we give it to you on the 12th and you have comments that are required, so it's either approved with conditions or denied, and you need to fix some stuff, then you have the chance to re, the first chance you can resubmit it is on February 6th. You've turned it in February 6th, you check, you get all the corrections made, it's good to go, we'll take it to P and Z on the 23rd. So that means we've met our 30-day timeline. So it's kind of set it up, and we can't require that the applicant turn it back in on that February 6th date, but they can turn it in on any of those resubmittal dates, and then they know if they come back in on March 13th that they'll come to the March 30th meeting. It's a little bit of pick-your-own-adventure.
Question, Pete? Anybody else have any questions, comments?
If we don't have quorum, is there a specific timeline that we have to have the meeting to make up?
If we don't have quorum, then I think with this tight timeline, the project will essentially approve itself.
Yeah, that's the thing you didn't mention.
Yeah, so that's, that's the deal of the shot clock is, is if you don't meet the 30-day timeline, the application essentially approves itself, and the city has to sign a certification that while not approved, it can go get recorded at the county. So that's why meeting quorum is...
But you can get alternates from the zoning board of adjustments if we can't make quorum.
Which we did once earlier this year. We had Mr. Moss, who's on our zoning board of adjustments, come to make quorum for a meeting.
It really puts the city under a burden, that we have to get all the Ts crossed, Is dotted, and all the, everybody to look at what needs to be looked at and still meet that 30 days. So, so quorums are important. Do we actually need to approve, we need to approve?
Yes, we need to, so actually, you need to open a public hearing. So we do adopt this every year by ordinance, so that it is what the calendar is for the year. And we're a little later than sometimes because council doesn't take their schedule for next year. So we always need to know when the council meeting dates are to know when things are getting to council.
There's no other questions? I'll open public hearing to consider this matter. Is there anyone signed up to speak?
Not at this time.
If not, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please let the record reflect that it was approved unanimously. Thank you much. We'll move on to item four, 4A. Update on recent council actions regarding planning department items.
Yes, so I actually didn't have any items at the last council meeting, but in October, I had four items on the agenda. We had four, three sections of the Colony MUD plats that there are public improvement plan agreements, those get approved by city council generally on consent, and those are essentially construction agreements. It says, you know, what the closeout process is going to be once they're done with the improvements and how they turn those over to the city. And if they're going to record the plat prior to building the improvements, they have to provide a performance agreement and fiscal surety that those improvements are going to get built. And then once they get built, we release those bonds, and then they provide us a maintenance bond for two years. That's what's in our code, and that gives us that two years that if something, a waterline fails, the city has the contractor usually come back and fix it, and if they don't, we have an insurance to go fix that for us. So those three sections went, and the Rosewood Path is actually just a road section that they're building, and that'll be one of the connections that they are making from the Colony into Valverde. So from section two. So there, you'll start to see some of those stubout connections that Valverde will eventually connect to. And then the second item we took, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on in a second, is we have a transportation impact fee study that council approved in the budget for FY 23. And we have a contract with Kimley Horn, which is an Austin engineering company, to do, to do that study and implementation plan for us. And I'll go into what that entails here in a second.
Any questions? When is that contract, when are they supposed to complete that contract?
July of next year is our schedule right now.
All right, and then that enables us to start reviewing the transportation plan, is that correct?
So, this, well, here, I'll go, I actually have some slides on in here and I'll cover it in a second.
Okay, great, sorry.
That's okay.
Kind of split it up a little bit.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to item 4B, updates from planning staff on management projects.
Well, that's just an example. So, just kind of give you an update on some of the management projects that you will be seeing fairly soon, because all of these will start kicking off pretty much in January. So, the first one, we've talked about this over the last couple of years, trying to get this going, we're doing a future land use plan and a five-year comprehensive plan update. So, with the adoption of the B3 code, our future land use plan is a little bit out of sync with the, the B3 code. Mostly, it calls out specific zoning districts in the code that we need to just translate into the new zoning districts. So, essentially, you just kind of have to know, we did a translation with the code adoption that certain zoning districts translated into the new zoning districts, so those supplanted it, but we need to formally change that in the future land use plan. Additionally, with all the growth that's been happening in Bastrop, five years is a good time to actually relook at your future land use plan with the rapid growth we're seeing and, and make some tweaks to the actual land use patterns that were adopted in 2016. So, that's what, that'll be the major change to the comprehensive plan. And then, we'll also be looking at a five-year update. So, in the charter and in the comprehensive plan itself, it calls for us to do a five-year update, which is kind of a broad overview, kind of go through the goals and objectives, see which ones we've completed, see which ones are still valid and maybe add a few more if there's some new priorities that the city's identified. But it's not a, not a rewrite of the comp plan, it's a refresh. So, with that update, we'll look at updating the demographics, looking at those goals and objectives and kind of doing just a high level, like, are we still on the right track for the comprehensive plan overall? That being said, obviously, we're working on different, the comprehensive plan looks at nine, eight different sections of the city. Future land use is one, parks and, parks is another, economic development is another. And then, from that, we have subplans that are more detailed that go into those sections. So, one of them, we had cultural arts and tourism, which a couple of years ago, we adopted a cultural arts master plan that goes into more detail based off of what was in that chapter. Another one we're working on this year is the Parks and Rec Master Plan that'll go into more detail, but following the recommendations that were in the comprehensive plan in 2016.
Are you going to have any public meetings?
Yes. So, we're still working out the scope with the consultants right now and our, our plan, if we can get it all done, is to get the contract to city council in December. If not, it'll be the first meeting in January. And then, that review and adoption process is expected to take 10 to 12 months, which we're hoping to kick off the project in January. And we have, since the P and Z is the keepers of the comprehensive plan, that the P and Z will be the stakeholder, that's not the word I want, a steering committee for the comprehensive plan. So, you all will be responsible for reviewing the outputs and the, and the details that our consultant brings back and propose the recommendations, recommended changes to city council for adoption.
Who hosts the public hearings or public comments?
So, the, the public meetings all be hosted by the city. And with other projects that I'll go over, there may be some overlap in some of our public meetings that we'll be able to kind of, you know, have one opportunity to get a lot of people together to get input on different areas of the city.
So, when you say the city, are you talking about your office? Are you talking about, who are you talking about? I'm sorry.
The city, so, the planning department is the project manager for this project. We'll have the consultant that'll be taking the lead on drafting the amendments and, and leading those different, we say, public meetings. They can take different forms. One is a charrette, which is more of like a hands-on activity, that you, you look at different options, you give your input, you kind of do more design. We're also looking at different ways of doing surveys, of doing online meetings, because we know in today's world, there's a lot of different ways that people interact. Some people want to come in person and have the meeting, some would rather tune into an online meeting and be able to ask questions that way, or some will just like to take a survey. And in our original comprehensive plan, that was, we did attack all those different avenues to try to reach as much of the population as possible.
Thank you.
And one of the other things we're really be looking at too is forming a stakeholder group to really reach out, because especially with the future land use plan, the people who you're, you're really wanting to get input on is the landowners, developers, and then citizens who will be impacted by those changes. So, it's, it's a little easier to identify specific stakeholders that'll be impacted, because if we change, you know, this, this intersection's now going to be a big commercial node and those landowners will want to, to have, be involved in that discussion.
So, the P and Z commissioners don't need to attend those stakeholder meetings?
They, our public meetings, definitely, and we will invite you to all of those.
Okay, thanks.
So, that's why I'm kind of giving you this, because there'll be a lot of meetings coming up in the next year that we'll be inviting y'all to. And we probably will have some extra actual meetings to go over the, the comprehensive plan and the recommendations. Or, and maybe just longer Thursday meetings to go over the recommendations.
Do you have a question?
Yes. Have no idea what, if this affects it at all, what we're talking about, but at the last council meeting, they want to form the committee to address the B3 codes. Is it's going to be affected in any way by that?
Not to my knowledge, no. Because the B3 code's looking at specifically the adopted code. So, this is looking at our future land use plan for the next 10 to 20 years. It's, it's a broader look. And then, from that, we drill down into the specific regulations that implements. Any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I have more, I have more. That was just that item. I have more, we're very busy. So, the other project that we'll, I think, be kicking off in January is a Loop 150 corridor study. So, this is a project that is actually headed up by CAMPO, which is the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. And they are our transportation planning, regional transportation planning organization for the central Texas region. So, they're funding the majority of the study to look at the Loop 150 corridor, which so starts at 71 here on the west, goes the entire loop, back to where it connects to 71 on the east. So, we're looking at that entire corridor, talking to the different consultants who've looked at the plan, you kind of, you have, you know, the commercial corridor that kind of comes up to the river, you come over the river, now you've got the downtown corridor until you hit Chestnut, then you kind of have the more rural section, and then you get more developed as you come back to the highway. So, you've kind of got four different segments of that. So, there'll be a lot of, kind of different recommendations that we think will come out of this. So, one of the things kind of driving the study is obviously Loop 150 is a TechDOT facility and it's the parallel route to 71. And with all the construction they've been doing on 71 over the last few years, a lot of the highway traffic has been routed through town.
Yep.
We're getting close to the end of the improvements over the river for 71. So, our hope is when that ends, the traffic will go back to being on 71, less traffic on Chestnut. And we want to look at ways, how do we want Chestnut to operate, especially as a multimodal facility, so people can walk, people can bike and still get cars through in a safe manner and maybe lessen the impact of the heavy traffic. So, that's, that'd be some of the goals. And it would be looking at the land uses, different businesses along the corridor. And then, what staff wants to get out of this is a list of what we call capital improvement projects. So, a list of different projects we'll need to do along the corridor that as different funding opportunities come up through CAMPO, through TechDOT, through the Department of Transportation, those are things we could apply for and get funded. So, because one of them we've been working on right now, obviously, is the Old Iron Bridge. And that's something we're continuing to work on and look for funding, for turning that into a multimodal facility, up kind of park pedestrian area.
You mention, I'm sorry, go ahead, excuse me. You mentioned the TechDOT 71 project close to the N. Is the city in communication TechDOT as to what close to the N means?
I know, so our, PD and fire get constant updates, they get weekly updates, there's a meeting, I can ask them what close to the N, but I, I just know we're a lot closer than we used to be.
That's right.
It's probably still longer than we want it to be, but yeah.
We would still need to get the State TechDOT's blessing if we wanted to make recommendations on what happens to Chestnut.
TechDOT will definitely be one of the stakeholders who's involved in these discussions. So, and so, CAMPO is the, actually, I have another slide. So, it's led by CAMPO, they are, they are the lead on this project. This is actually their study, but they're doing it for the city. We're expected to do project kickoff, I think, January, maybe February. And there's a fairly heavy public engagement component that the consultant we were talking to was very excited to do charrettes, like a very aggressive charrette process. And we did them during the B3 codes, we called them code rodeos. But the technical planning term, which makes not a lot of sense because it's French, is charrette, but it usually means a multi-day.
French is okay.
It's a.
French is okay.
But it's a multi-day session, usually where you come in first and do the design section first, so everyone comes in. It's more hands-on activity, you can draw pictures, you can, you can look at different styles or, in this case, different road sections, you can try to see what fits in our right-of-way. And then, the consultant will take all that data and formulate that and then come back a couple of days later and actually show you how that's all going to work from the ideas that people gave, that what they wanted to see, show what that would look like in action. So, it's kind of a rough approximation of what a charrette is. So, and, but they're also involving, looking at surveys online, having a public website so people can, that if they don't have time to come to the meetings, they can still see what's going on and interact with the results.
Okay.
Any questions on that study? And I have one more. And that one, we'll have a specific stakeholder group that is the lead on that project, but P and Z will definitely be invited to all of the public input sessions.
What's the timeframe for the Loop 150 project? Like, when are they looking to get started?
It's a, it's about a 12 to 14-month process. And so, some of that I'll also deal with, it'll be, it's a lot of engineering also involved in that, looking at traffic counts, looking at what kind of, you know, transportation elements are already existing and how changing those would affect the corridor. And so, then the last one that I talked about earlier is our transportation impact fee study. So, one of the big topics we always talk about with new development is traffic and the traffic that's caused by the development. There's lots of different ways to try to address that. Some is by, we currently have a street grid that's required and you have to build all the roads. That if yours, if your area of development requires the road in that area, then your development needs to build the road. Prior to that, in our previous code, we did a traffic impact analysis. Each development would do a study, they'd look at the current traffic, the current intersections, we'd have to define where we thought they were going to impact. They'd come, they do a study, they guess at what their end uses were going to be and then establish, well, we're going to generate this much traffic and we need to do these improvements, but we're only causing 10% of that traffic, so we only need to pay 10% of that stoplight. Okay, so now, we got to keep 10% of the money and then try to address it to that stoplight when the other nine, and 50% of the traffic problem is already there, the other 40% are caused by other developments. It, it's kind of a, an imperfect solution as well. So, the third option that you can do are transportation impact fees or roadway impact fees. And they are a one-time fee that's assessed at the plat. So, what the, and these are very similar to our water and wastewater impact fees that we talk about usually about once a year. So, so when your plat gets recorded, that establishes what the fee is on that date, but you don't pay the fee until you pull the building permit. So, when you get your building permit is when you have to pay the money into the fund. It's a mechanism to cover costs associated with the infrastructure from future development, so this can't pay for a traffic problem that we already have. So, we can't resurface a road that's got a lot of potholes. We can't bill, you know, just rebuild a road that's already a two-lane road is another two-lane road, has to add capacity to the network. So, it's Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code is the section that allows cities to impose traffic impact fees. This is the same section that lets us do water and wastewater impact fees as well. And then, you can see, we currently do water and wastewater impact fees, we do not have roadway or drainage impact fees in the city.
So, is the fee going to be a, a set fee or is it going to be a percentage based off of the cost of the project?
It is a set fee that is based off of what kind of traffic you will be generating. Yeah. So, other municipalities in this area that have adopted traffic impact fees, most of them in the last five, 10 years, Austin, Flugerville, Round Rock, Leander, Georgetown, Hutto and New Braunfels are the ones in the closest proximity, but they becoming, they're becoming a more typical way to try to recoup the impacts from development. It's, it's a more predictable way for a developer, they know that they're generating this land use, this much traffic, they know what the fee will be. It's a traffic impact analysis, starting is like a $50,000 engineering study before you even come up with what the, the improvements may need to be.
Can you explain what you mean by what type of traffic is being generated? What is that?
Sure. So, the fee is set, it's going to be a, won't be that complicated of a calculation, but there'll be a lot of inputs that go in behind the scenes. It looks at land use assumptions. So, basically, we're going to look at the entire transportation network for the city, the improvements to that network we need to build. So, things that are in our capital improvement plans, so like Blakey Lane is one that the street we know needs to be built to connect back to Riverside Grove. So, that's, that's part of our capital improvement plan, that would be one of the inputs that goes in that we know needs to get paid for. And so, that, our population and employment projections, our growth rates, which is all, all these inputs also go into our water and wastewater impact fees, our land uses, so basically, what we think the different land uses based off of our future land use plan, what'll go in an area. And then, and then consistent with our planning estimates of how fast the growth is going to come. And so, essentially, we'll have a chart that your fee is based off of your specific use that you're doing. So, if you are a Starbucks, your, your traffic pattern is a lot different than a dental office. So, the way you generate traffic and the, the peak flow, like when all that traffic's coming to your site, is different than, and then like a daycare. So, some of those peak in the morning or the afternoon, Starbucks peaks in the morning, dental offices are consistent all through the day. So, those, that'll go into a calculation and that'll calculate what your fee will be. And it'll be, our consultants will explain all this to you much better than I do. So, we contracted in, the last meeting in October with Kimley Horn and Associates, they've done some other work for us on, they've been reviewing traffic impact analysis, when we have had to do them in town. We actually kicked off this week with them to go over some of the, the base, like big, big picture things of how are they going to start the study? And they'll be doing the study this month in January and then putting everything together. Intendedly, our schedule is that we'll probably need to convene the Impact Fee Advisory Committee in March, which the Impact Fee Advisory Committee is the P and Z plus Don Cana as our ETJ resident. So, kind of think of that in your brain, you'll be getting a presentation, a public hearing on the, it's the land use assumption. So, all the stuff that I really badly explained, they will explain much better to you at that meeting.
I, I just am curious, how much does a study like that cost?
So, we contracted with Kimley Horn for $80,000. It's, there's a lot of data that they have to go, they have to get, you know, what does a street cost the city to build? They, they actually drove around after our meeting this week and were watching the traffic patterns in town, they'll do traffic count, so there'll be a lot of engineering that goes into this study. And then, they'll help with the adoption process. So, once they get all the data, then it's up to P and Z and council to make the, P and Z to make the recommendations and council to actually adopt the fee. And since it's new, we figure there'll be a little bit more education part. Impact fees for water and wastewater, everyone's pretty familiar with, we change those every year or two. Everyone knows they go to pay for the water plant, the wastewater plant, the lines that go in the ground, the new lines that go in. So, similar idea, but for transportation, the inputs are a little different because it's, how you, how you estimate traffic is different than how you estimate how much water something's going to use, so. Any questions on that one? And then, two other projects that we have upcoming for next year. And then two other projects that we have upcoming for next year will be the annexation plan, so looking at areas like if we want to continue annexing, and like where our hard lines should be as developers continue to come in, and looking for water and wastewater and those different things, where we want to cut off the annexation line. And then our transportation master plan update, it was adopted in 2017. So, and again, with the growth, we need to update that as well. And our plan is, is that with the inputs from the Impact Fee Study and the Loop 150 Study, we'll have some good data then to help with that update as well. But we haven't started selecting any consultants or anything yet, so.
Has there been any discussion about doing a drainage impact fee?
So this year, we're in the tail end of the Drainage Master Plan, so the engineering department for the last about year has been working with Hafen Associates to do a drainage study for all of town, and are looking at, so from that study, it'll come recommendations on some maybe regional detention we need to do, other drainage projects we need to do, and if a drainage impact fee is something we should be pursuing. So they'll be providing recommendations with that study.
Do we have an estimated completion date?
I do not, I'll have to check with engineering on that. We've got a lot of studies going on.
Yeah, I started to say, it looks like y'all don't have very much going on next year.
Not at all. That's beyond the red map I showed you last meeting with all the upcoming developments. Any other questions on, so just, we call them management projects, so the long-range projects that we're working on? And I'm not looking for any new ones right now.
I don't think you're going to have to go looking for a long time. It'll be coming to you. I hate to keep bringing this up, and maybe it's because I'm new and I don't understand, but we keep talking about having some kind of fire policy or plan or rule.
The WUWE code is what we call it, it's the Wildland Urban Interface Code. And so it's an actual, it's a part of the International Code Council family of codes, which we've adopted a lot of them already. We have the International Building Code, International Residential Code, Existing Building Code. This is another one of those families, and we looked at it when we were adopting the 2018 codes, and the Construction Standards Board had some questions, outstanding questions and concerns about adopting the WUWE code. And that's something that our fire chief and building official are looking at, and that's something on their, on their list for next year.
On their list for next year, early part of the year?
Yes.
Okay. Jennifer, is that, Pete has brought this up before too, what she just said, but is that what Pablo had referred to quite a bit?
Yeah, that was what he was talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so concern, as to my understanding, I didn't go to the meetings, was that the way, the base map that you would tie it back to is like the Forest Service map, and because of our tree cover in this area, it would apply to everything, not just the, everything in the Lost Pines area, but all the way up to the river. So it would apply to houses in the downtown, and there was concern from the Construction Standards Board members on what that would do to houses that were renovating, on what kind of costs may be associated to upgrade houses to the WUWE code standard in town, and were people willing? So I think the, one of the things we're looking at is how to maybe define a specific map that doesn't apply to the downtown, where the risk is still lower due to fire hydrants. The trees aren't, there's not the underbrush element there is over on the east side of town. And so that's the part, that's the study that they're working on.
Now, I'd enforce the Planning and Development Department Monthly Project Volume Report.
Yeah, so I will say, we're a bit slower on the building side, which is to be expected as we're going into winter, things slow down as it gets colder. For the month of September, we had two new home starts, two new commercial projects, and we're a little lower on the trade permits, but when you compare it to October, we actually picked back up a little bit. Still two new home starts and one new commercial construction, but more trade permits in the month of, and a lot of irrigation permits, and you see irrigation permits, because that's the last thing that tends to get done on a house before they sell it. So all of the production home builders, they're to the irrigation step before they sell the house. So we're getting, doing a lot of irrigation inspections. For the building side, we had 22 total applications in the month of September and 38 in the month of October. Sometimes you will see a little bit of an uptick in building, or in planning towards the end of the year, if people are trying to get, you know, different things approved prior to the end of the calendar year for bank financing reasons. And then some notable projects, just because you might see them as you're going around town, Rapid Express Car Wash, they haven't, they're going to start their site work tomorrow, I think. So this is another, similar to the car wash in front of the boot company or by the boot company, it'll be a tunnel car wash, and it'll be right over here by Popeyes. So that'll start construction probably next week. And then Pete Terry's hamburger, which announced themselves like a year ago, before they turned in any of their plans, they should be starting the demo of the old Payless building, if they haven't already. So the old Payless shoe source, that's where Pete Terry's hamburger is going to go. And then I keep getting a lot of questions about this, what's going on in front of Seton? Unfortunately, it's nothing real exciting, it's a big wastewater line. So this is part of the new wastewater treatment plant, this is one of the big trunk lines that'll go back to the wastewater treatment plant to get, so instead of everything going to the existing wastewater treatment plant, these are the lines that'll connect everything to the new wastewater treatment plant, so.
Jennifer, on the Popeyes, I can't envision where that is, where the car wash is going. When I look at it, where is the land that it's going to go on?
So it's right between, so you have the church, so that, that's down a ways, and the property builds up, so that flat area right to the left of Popeyes. That'll be.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
It was this, it was platted back about 10 years ago as part of that, with the strip center, the Popeyes, and then this was the last site, so.
Am I correct that that's one of the first new commercial projects that we've got coming since the B-3 code?
Probably.
That meant, that has the.
Yeah, and so it'll actually be interesting, because it's actually the same developers who did the other car wash at the end of, at the other end of the city, but it'll look different, so, because it met our code. So there won't be any parking in front of the building, and while it's not a one solid building, they did a kind of facade wall that'll screen the vacuum bays, and it'll look more like one complete building from the front, so. And they're using some alternative materials that look like wood but are not, and it's Trex, it's a kind of plastic wood composite material, so.
Be interesting.
Yes, it'll be interesting, so. So yes.
Do you have a question?
Questions or comments? Good deal. Where are we, are we? We are at 4D, Individual Requests from Planning and Zoning Commissioners, That Particular Item Should Be Listed on Future Agendas. If there are none.
And we are expected to have a December P&amp;Z meeting, we have several plats that'll be on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Question coming from the public. Can we have a review of the signs section, Chapter 8?
So that's something that has gone back and forth, and we can go over them, but like, I need direction from council to actually initiate a code change, so we kind of.
The question then is the, maybe a discussion item on the process to initiate a review and update of Chapter 8 signs.
Yeah, because part of that, it's going to take a significant amount of staff time, or it may take a consultant to do that, so.
True.
And so that's a.
Maybe that's just the discussion item, tell us what we need to do.
Yeah, okay.
And how to start that process? Because I know it's not overnight, that's 30 pages of fun.
Yeah, and that's something that, again, I work for the city managers, the city manager's going to have to direct me, and then council's going to have to fund that project. Or take us off of other projects we're working on, so that's kind of the discussion we're having right now, is citywide, we've got a lot of projects going on, and if we want to add a new project on, which project do you want me to stop working on? Because there's only so many of us.
Right, and I'm just throwing these out there, because I know there's a queue and a priority, and I'm not the one setting those.
Yes.
Just for fun, I decided to read everything, so I read the whole code. We have work ahead. And one of the little, it's a little thing, but it's also a big thing, which is the Building Block Technical Manual, the notification requirements are probably too small.
Excuse me, but at this time, if you look at the.
Excuse me.
There's no group discussion allowed on any of this?
Nobody's, okay, I would like to have that added as an item.
Thank you. Anything else?
And.
Could I just ask Jennifer, on the, since she brought the signs up, of course, I'm not going to repeat mine, but since we do, the council did agree to have a committee that's going to address the B-3 codes, would that be included probably in that review?
I would assume so, I'm not part of that committee, so it's.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else? If not, we'll move on to item five.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you all, have a good Thanksgiving.